Well, we have a very full agenda for today's study session, so I think we'll go ahead and get started. And Superintendent, we're glad you're doing a little bit better anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
I will turn my attention to you.
Fantastic. So we have several things to cover tonight. Second unit study section, our update required by State statute to make the board aware of our human sexuality course material curriculum. And so we are holding on that.
We're going to need to hold on that. Mari is homesick.
Okay, so Jessica won't be here for the -- we have less items to cover tonight.
You want our part?
I saw the text that she was sick. I didn't know Jessica was studying in her desk. So we would like to review the capital budget for fiscal year 2023. And then we'll discuss attended the bond campaign and timeline. We'll have Rob lead us through the capital budget for fiscal year 23, and his team, appreciate them being here. And then Kimberly to take us through the bond campaign and timeline. We'll have some time for Board governance. And then just a few updates on district separation and some discussion that may go along regarding that. We will proceed. Maybe we'll let the Board governance relax and let me reflect on that as needed. Rob, you want to start with the capitals?
Thank you, Superintendent. Thanks to our business team. I've got Randy and Jason here behind me. Steve also is here. Robert is not with us, but we'll recognize him as well. Appreciate also Wayne and Frank, Mike. We have the board of directors sitting here and it helps us with our site.
Joe Hayes directs from Hall.
And Matt Johnson. And Matt DiGianni. So we follow our process. We've tried to involve a lot of people. We've tried to ascertain the needs for capital. And we're going to share a couple of things with you tonight. As well as talk about the need to accelerate the financing and construction of a school. And West Transportation Service Center and incorporation of traditional schools that we need to build. So I'm going to just share, those of you on the Budget Committee have seen this. The other board members should have received the finance committee minutes as well. I think last night. Appreciate them getting those out. This is our capital forecast and in this forecast prepared by our Budget Team. It looks at several things. Up on top are the different variables or assumptions that we make. The revenue that we generate from some of those assumptions. And then how we allocate or spend those revenues at bottom. And then the very lowest, or the last line there is our fund balance. Our target for that fund balance is around 10 million. You'll see that some years we have a little lower fund balance because of specific needs or things the board has approved, or revenue has come in less than what was estimated. And then the other years, you can see where the target is about $10 million. If you look at 2021, 2022, that's the year that we're in. So as we look at where we are, we have about 47 million. If you'll notice, that's a significant increase from the prior year. Because the board went through treatment taxation to raise our tax increments in capital. So this is the area where you will see that. Down below, you'll see the expenditures. Whether that's site acquisition, we bought some property, we have more property to purchase. We've done a lot of improvements to facilities. We bought a lot of instructional equipment and supported our teachers and their classrooms as well as our students. And then we purchased vehicles, buses, and our white fleet. Robin, 47, we expect 34. So you can see the fund balance coming in from 5 million in the prior year up to about 18 million. Don't get excited about that because we just started purchasing these properties and so we brought some of those things down. Our estimate for next year, revenue estimates will come down a little bit. One of the other things I wanted to point out here is the state increase in state aid. So in the revenue section right in the middle, we had been tracking around 8 million and then dropped to 4 million. And then we dropped to 700,000. Less than we made that off of another story because of our enrollment fee. How about this year, about reading group conservative there on my estimate? Or we're hopeful that the legislature provides additional funding there, but we're not counting enough. So the revenue dropped from 47 to 33. The biggest reason is property sales. This year, we sold a few pieces of property in the building of form. And we sold those things to help instruct our new facility progress in Summit in American Ford. So that's one of the biggest revenue decreases from state. And then also decreases here both. We won't be selling property, don't assume that is moving forward. Coming down to the expenditures, we've got about 35 million that we're recommending. Or excuse me, 39.5 million that we're recommending. And I'll go into the detail as to what that is. And that'll bring our fund balance down again close to that $10 million. Questions on the forecast? Turn over to us. This is a request, and I think the question's a little bit bigger, according to the act. This is an instructional form ask. We're going to see. The question over here on the left, what the particular item is, which department, and this is assorted alphabetically from Z to A, I believe. And so we do that again, just to mix things up for you. Instead of from A to Z, sort of having a rotation. But also to have other departments and some of their requests were looked at, maybe a little bit differently. So you can see here, we got requests, I think there was 37 requests. 66,000 million. And again, just under 40 million of potential revenue, which is actually a pretty decent year. For those of you that have any capital, we have 65 million requests and we have 45 million to probably spend. Which is a much more difficult challenge for us. So the subcommittee committee together, and the person that I recognize is the thing them, the working with our Budget Team. They came in on the 2nd of February and they took up the initial requests, the 37 requests and said, What do we need to get? What are our priorities? They worked through that and came up with a subcommittee request. That was then taken to our whole Budget Committee, which three of our board members sort of on. That meeting occurred on the 9th of the 10th of February. And that's captured here in this DDC District Budget Committee recommendation. So from the 3rd of February, we actually had a few different categories. We took some property off. We had some ways to deal with that. We increased a little bit of the initial conversation for the service center. As well as some additional increase in, from a link on the third item that we adjusted. From the initial, when we were ready classrooms. When we were ready classrooms, yes. That was the other one. The reason we adjusted that one a little bit, that's right here, request number six. That was adjusted now. We have some digital teaching materials and an additional grant. For people who point at the box at some of those categories. And then maybe less of the traditional problems. Randy, Jason, anybody from that subcommittee? Anything that you think we ought to highlight for the board here that I haven't hit? We can talk through the specific items if the board would like to do that. I had climate undering, we had in the detail, we do have this. Can members of the Budget Committee, whoever, any items that you would like to talk about? Or you had questions about that we discussed more in the budget meeting? Can you sign it over to the air? Is that helpful?
Yeah. You know, the question I always have is, you have all these requests and they're genuine and real. How many requests do we have this year that are left over from last year? How do we catch up on things? At what point do you just keep putting it off and putting it off? At what point do you say we have to do this? So how much of this, I mean, do we have any idea how many of these requests are from previous years? Or have been, and how many are new from this year?
We could go back and analyze that data and share with you. My initial response is many of these requests you see every year. Because there is always work to do with carpet replacement. Or there's always work to do with roofing replacement. Or there's always computers or network infrastructure we need to buy. There's always buses that we need to purchase. There might be fewer buses in one year versus another year. But rotating that fleet and continuing that investment helps to have a newer fleet. But also minimizes other potential budget expenditures like repair and et cetera. So many of these you see, maybe a couple that you haven't seen. We have basketball shot clocks is on here. That's a unique. That was a Utah High School Activities Association requirement. It's an unfunded mandate, but we are required to outfit our gyms with that requirement. That's going to have costs that we estimate $160,000. Another one that's unique this year that we have on that, and something the board may want to talk about, is the Skyridge turf field. Well, we put grass at Skyridge initially when the school was built. We have an opportunity and we put grass for a lacrosse field because they didn't have a turf field. Well, one of the options the board might consider is if you were to sell off the lacrosse field, then that would generate the revenue if you would have to input in the turf field. So those are a couple of things that are a little different this year. The other one I think is right at the top. It's in our transportation, our West Service Center. You can see we set aside 2 million in last year's budget for this. You can see we have, we're recommending 3 million. And then our LVA will contemplate any additional that we need to get that built. So those are a couple of things that are unique to this year. But again, Sarah, back to your question, most of these things you'll see, they're ongoing needs. And we have not caught up from the deferred maintenance that we've had from the recession back in '09, '10, '11. And I would say, Frank, we're always a little behind on some of those replacements. Is that fair?
Items 22, 23, 21, 23, Bleachers. One of them is funded, the other, Long Peak is funded. What's the difference between '22 and '23? Are those two different locations?
They are, two different locations. So the one of greatest need is the one we're recommending fund. And the other one will be a project we defer until next year. And you'll see it rise up in one we fund in the future.
So Jim Bleachers inside are the two after that, the West stands on Long Peak are the outside football stadium. The other two, because Long Peak and Timpanos were built the same year. They both had great need for repairing their bleachers within their building.
Other questions from the board? Or if you can really make the minutes from your perspective? Anything you want to highlight?
So the one on our table is that's just for us.
Yeah, yes.
So we did a little bit of a pilot and now we're.
Yeah, for those of us who were fortunate enough to go out for Love the Bus Week. We had in their boxes, they had the old zone on our lawn, is what I would call it. And the new zone on tablet. And you watched the drivers, and I actually asked a couple of the drivers about the differences. The tablets are much more effective, their 120s are friendly. They're a better, less clunky device. And they said, yeah, we really like the new tablets. And so this just expands and builds upon our investment.
These are not for the pilot though. These are for like when you're doing the bus check every morning. There's like an 85 point checklist that they have to do. And so it loads that in the checklist and then it very quickly sends it back to like, yes, I checked the horn, the brakes, the whatever. So that's different than the pilot.
That's why, yeah, that's what I'm referring to. Everyone that checks all of the items, they need to check tires when you're on the bus.
Monitors them how long they're each way, so how long it took them to take you to their ramp.
Not the pilot for the, what's going on on the bus. Any other questions here? If not, we're going to jump to the next piece that we have for you. Why a resolution? Why are we recommending we move forward on the financing? Okay, appreciate that helped our team, the buddies together. We have, we have CBL, our bond counsel. We want to share with you just a couple of slides about the current budget conditions. And you'll see here just a couple of slides, why we feel we need to move now. And what some risks are of not moving now. All of you have heard a little bit about inflation in the news. Consumer prices at X. Was that who asked the question this morning? Is CPI. CPI is seven and a half percent year over year as of January. True inflation is probably much higher than that. And you can see some of the highlighted factors in yellow. In some of the energy areas with gasoline, the 40% energy as a composite, 7%. Electricity, 10.7. Utilities or gas, 23.7. So you can see that real inflation is higher than just CPI. That creates what we would call an inflationary risk. That creates what we would call an inflationary risk. So with prices increasing and increasing rapidly, our buying power, if we delay six months or a year, is diminished. And so moving today actually will save dollars in a rapidly increasing or inflationary situation. That's what we're experiencing. When you look at the producer price index, some non-residential construction index, 16.5%. And I think one of our board members has had a recent experience in reconstruction of a part of their home. And she shared with me that the initial bid versus the actual cost, it's gone up two and a half times. We're seeing that across the board, wages are up significantly, the benefits on those wages are up significantly. And in a rapidly growing economy like Utah, we have supply chain issues, we have material issues, and that's driving construction costs significantly. So buying today would be cheaper than buying six months or a year from now. The next thing we want to talk about is interest rate risk. It's interesting when we put these couple of slides together for the board, Steve and I were talking about an announcement from the Fed about how they're going to manage inflation and we were talking about, well, do you think it's going to be a quarter percent in each of the seven meetings of the Fed? Are they going to surprise us with a quarter or the half percent? There's all sorts of speculation about what influence is going to happen with interest rates. But we issued bonds and refinanced bonds for our taxpayers and saved them about $11 million last fall. We issued a 0.75%. Similar school districts with similar bond ratings that have issued in the last 30 days have issued between 1.5% and 3%. Prices have increased as far as financing significantly from where we were last fall. So the longer we delay, as those prices continue to increase, the cost of financing a project will increase. So by moving today, we can save a lot of dollars when you get into the market. So those are some of the reasons why we wanted to bring this to you and we have a resolution for your consideration tonight. So we avoid or minimize price risk, inflationary risk, and interest rate or financing risk, both of which will increase the cost of our projects. Questions?
So how soon can you lock in a rate? Like if you decided to move on, when can you lock in a rate?
We would lock in rates at the end of March, as fast as we could go. We have a contest period, if the board approves a resolution to issue bonds, anybody could come in and potentially contest that issue. We didn't follow legal notice, we didn't follow some of the, one of the parameters in letting the public know about a potential board decision. Once that contest period expires, we issue our official statements and we get it to the market and again, bond calendar, I want to say is at the end of March. Do you guys know, do you have the calendar up? Can you pull that up and we can give you the exact date? You could go, if we didn't go through a competitive bid, which is what we typically do, we let the market give us the best bid, we're triple rated, AAA rated, strong credit. This financing would be AA1, so lease revenue, lease revenue bonds carry one notch below a general obligation rating, which is the highest we can get. The reason is GeoBonds is full faith in credit, lease revenue bond is in annual appropriation. So even though you've got super strong credit, it's always one notch below because the board could have not appropriated the must pay back that in a debt. But that's never happened for our board. It could be very unlikely, it could be used at the middle school, it's a reasonable price. But that's one of the reasons why there's just a slight difference in the rating for lease revenue transaction versus a general obligation bond. General obligation bond requires a total. And definitely if we do that, it'd be November this year if the board determines that that's what we should do.
And is, is 30 year max, they would let you bond out? Or can you go even, can you go 35?
We have some restrictions relative to our municipal bond act, but a 30 year bond would be of improvement. And here's why. We're rapidly growing and that ties your hands for an extended period of time. Our board has traditionally looked at a 15 year bond window, 17 years is kind of where we sit right now, 17 year. Going longer than that ties your hands and makes you less nimble that you're stretching that out. You also have longer debt or longer interest and more interest.
I guess what I'm trying to say is if you could get, for example, a rate where the rate is a little low if you go long, 35, but then let's say in three to five years interest rates drop in and we can refinance those bonds. And so, I mean, I'm sure you guys play with that all the time.
We would put that on. We're subject to call provisions that are in the bond that then we put out to our debt hold. And again, that affects price, your call provisions are going to structure that debt. We could, and one of the things with this transaction, we're going to propose to refinance a portion of the 2014 bond because it has a higher interest rate. We can save about 5%. It's not as big a saver as the one we did in the ball, but it is going to save some money before interest rates rise. But that's going to work very closely with our bond counsel and our financial advisor on the timing, the structure, et cetera. We would recommend staying with that 17 year horizon. Again, other entities have gone out 20 years, some have gone out 25 years, but because of our rapid growth needs and our conservative public, our recommendation would be to stay shorter than that. Great questions. Did that answer that question, Sarah? Okay, couple other things. The Fed's got some tapering actions they're going to have to deal with. And again, if those of you are following the market, interest rates are climbing and I think you'll see more of that in the future. This is a slide, appreciate Steve including this in the presentation. The blue line, November 16th is when we refinance the bonds. The green line is what you can see is January 6th. We actually were just under one of the lowest rates. When you look at that benchmark curve for financing AAA rated entities like us, we beat it. We actually outperformed in most ways the market. And then the top line you can see is what happened from November to February. And so again, as that line moves up, the cost of financing continues to increase. We hit that last one about as good as we could get. And that was again, great planning, great team, trying to look forward.
MND, is that?
Municipal market bet, right?
Municipal market, yeah.
I've got that one.
When's the bond set?
March 29th.
March 29th is the bond set. So that would be the quickest that we could move and get into the market. And we would structure the refining, refinancing bonds for the 2014 and the LBA on the same day. We'd do them like we did the last time, last refinancing. Most of you have seen this, this is the way we structure our debt. We build in, I'm going to try this new thing with Jason and Randy. Oh, it looks great. Each one of these colors is a year of issue or a series of bonds that we've issued. The legend down here, you can see that last series is that green that you see here. The ones we're talking about are in red, this little issue or series right here, this is our 2014 bonds. And again, it's not a lot of money, but if we can save about 5%, anytime you refinance something, if you can save greater than 3% when you look at long-term debt, then it's a positive transaction. This is about a 5% saver. It's not like the 10% saver that we have in the fall, but we look at that and try to, again, save taxpayers money or restructure the debt so we can layer in another bond without significant increase to our taxpayers. Again, we structure this in such a way that we can layer new bonds, just like you see these bonds layering down, like with little steps, we would layer a new bond and fill in this hole so that way the tax rate does not increase to the taxpayer. Here's what the debt service chart would look like if we refinanced the 2014 bonds. And what we would do again is stack some of that here earlier, keep that payment a little bit higher and create more of a hole. If the board were to go for a capital campaign, this gap gets larger. So we can layer those bonds in '25, '26 for a potential next bond. That would then give us more opportunity to keep that, or a larger dollar amount to keep those payments flat or less than they currently are. So that's what that looks like. And again, I appreciate Matt Dugdale, Chris Kirk, our team, Stiefel, they put this together, run these analyses for us and they've really done some great work. All that being said, I'm going to wrap up with this, that we would recommend the board move forward, refund the 2014 series, again, save us about 5%. And then use the LBA to issue $35 million of bonds. We would construct an elementary school in the mountain. We would, with the capital funds, construct the West Transportation Service Center. And then we would also invest in some site work to be prepared for a possible general obligation bond later this year, should the board decide to go for it. That would get us ready, shovel ready basically, to start building on some projects that are very, very needed. So can any of your questions?
Well, can you, can you kind of tell us again what the cost is right now for an elementary school, middle school and high school again?
The cost as of right now, I haven't bid right now, so I don't know the cost as of right now, but I would say an elementary school today, tomorrow, or within the next couple of weeks. We build an 84,000 square foot elementary school and depending on site issues, it would be around 25 million. And again, the reason I say depending on site issues, every school site we build on has some unique issues. We don't have just flat farmland with close utilities like we've had in the past. Harbor Point, we had to build a lot of retaining walls, we had to build a turn lane, we had to, there are things that we have to do with some of our sites today that we haven't in the past. But around 25 million, and again, our capital team, Kimberly and Frank and their group, they would bid that out and we would get the very best possible price we could get. And that would be what I would guess as of today, somewhere between 25, maybe 27 and a half, depending on the market.
And middle school?
Middle school would be between 40 and 50 million. We build 180 to 185,000 square foot facility. And again, prices are changing, but we build the same building to save cost on architectural design as well as our contractors know what they're building because they've built it before. So we typically get good prices. That's a strategy that many entities that are in the state utilize to save money.
And then the high school?
High school, we build about 340 to 350,000 square foot facility. And we built Cedar Valley at 73 million was the construction cost, all in was about 78, Frank. And today's dollar amount for that would be somewhere around 100 million. Again, that will depend on the actual when you bid it and what the construction market conditions are at the time. But if you just were to take a certain dollar amount per square foot, you were multiply that by 340,000 square feet, that would be the best estimate that we have. Some school districts to our north are estimating 120 to 140 million square foot. Other school districts build additional things in their schools that we haven't traditionally done, like pools and other things, but that's the most accurate information that I have. Kimberly, any corrections or additions that you would make? Or Frank, anything from your end?
I think those numbers are important and as we build our capital information to the public, we have to build in inflation. And that's why you will see in different phases of whatever we're going after, a different number. So we're, do you remember we were on the news a couple of years ago because we were at the end of our $386 million general obligation bond, I mean? We built in an inflation, but not large enough for the inflation that we experienced. So we had to do some other things to make up for it. So we're doing our best, right Frank, with our estimates to be about 10% in our inflation?
So we have built in, just model.
We've been more aggressive on the price inflation, which is I think in the past we've used 3%. So when you use a 10%, we're basically accommodating 3X what, basically 3X plus of what we have for price inflation.
So are construction companies, there's no regulation on them when they're dealing with public facilities and public funds, that they, they have to be committed to a bid that they offer? Even if the market goes crazy and let's say steel goes up and they, what I'm trying to say is, do they have to stick with a bid or do they say, "Sorry, we're not going to eat that?" So I know that you've made room, but I'm just saying, are they committed and it doesn't matter?
We contractually, when we go out to bid, we contract with them and they have certain obligations. They are very regulated, as are we, as we build school facilities.
There's a difference between being in a contract, so somebody won the bid, that's one thing, and then when we model something out, we're basing it on what we think inflation will be and the bid costs we're estimating for the future. So yeah, the contract, that locks it in, but the other one that we don't, we don't lock in every single project in the first year and that's where it's a little bit, I wouldn't say it's a guessing game because these guys are really good at what they do and the companies, I just think we have a lot of information we can use, but it's not an exact science until we get to the time where we have the funding that is approved and then we lock in a bid.
And if the bid came in higher, then we as a team would have to go back and we'd have to look at that and say, "Do we need to cut the scope of the project? Do we need to cut expenditures to bring it back within the dollar amount? Or do we find another way to finance some of those additional costs? Because they are essential and the market changes are such that we could not have predicted." Again, we use our best estimates, we use data like this, we have financial consultants, we have construction, we work with some of the best people in Utah on these issues, but sometimes we miss it. Sometimes the inflation will be greater than what we estimate. Then we come back and say, "Do we need to cut a budget? Or do we need to find a way to finance that additional cost?" And then we bring that to the board and the board says what they want us to do and then we execute that. Good questions? Others? Awesome. Superintendent, that included our piece. Unless I've missed anything, guys, anything else?
The only thing I'd add is refunding Series 2014, the present value savings for that's $1.25 million.
Thanks, Steve. Jason, Randy from Budgeting. Frank? Anything else from the board on this matter?
Okay, speaking of finances and obligation bonds and we'll turn some time over to Kimberly, who will take us through timelines that we ought to consider the process in preparing for board determinations whether or not to place a general obligation bond on any member bond.
Okay, thanks Superintendent. I appreciate Frank being here. Frank is an important factor to the capital work that we do. He informs us on so much information, so he's here to make sure that anything- He informs us on so much information, so he's here to make sure that anything that comes out of my mouth is as accurate, really, as possible. And then also, on this presentation, this is the timeframe where David and I lock together into place as internal and external communications as we put a campaign together. So I'm going to take on this first slide, where we are currently, and how much further we're going in our design and development of a capital plan. And then we'll transition into what you guys determine at a certain phase, after we've gathered a lot of public input, what our next steps will be. So I want you to look at this screen first. Recently, we put an RFP out for a third-party consultant. We had two companies who were interested. It was awarded to Y2 Analytics. Yes, we have used them in the past, and they had a really nice application that scored high on the points. So here are some of the things that Y2 Analytics will do from a third-party lens. They'll work with focus groups, and they will select members to participate from focus groups, from not just Alpine School District parents, but from all voters within the 14 municipalities that we serve. So they have a really great voter base of information that really will help us to... We try not to be biased in the things that we look at or assess or evaluate, but truly it's so much better to have an external party that's bringing in the sentiment of taxpayers who represent a wide gamut, from the fixed income family to people who have no children, to people who have children but they don't attend Alpine School District schools. There's a lot of things to consider, and that's what Y2 Analytics can help us learn from. So we will have them help with focus groups, surveys, design key projects, as we share with them what our capital committee has put forward, and also as Rob's weighed in on the financial element. They will look at maybe different pricings of bonds and see what the public sentiment is on dollars that they would be willing to support in a general obligation bond. So we'll look at the taxpayer impact, we'll look at the data analysis, and then they will make a formal presentation to the Board of Ed at a certain point. In March, that's... We're just knocking on the door of March, that's when focus groups are identified, and they start doing their work. They do it off-site, not in an Alpine School District facility, but one that they have control over. They allow us to watch from behind a glass or behind a video, so that we can learn from the information they're gathering, but we don't impact the work that they do and their professional expertise. At the end of March, their survey will be built based on the initial data that they gathered from those focus groups and from the information we've provided from our capital team and financial information. They will put together a professional survey. Again, they will use a voter base, not just parents from Alpine School District. We have to make sure we're getting information and gathering feedback from as many as possible, but they determine what the end size will be. What is something that they can feel confident, that is a good confidence level to inform you guys on, as you are determining whether or not you're going to go after a bond?
Will we see that survey? Or is it...
Yes, you'll see the survey, we'll share it back in our district leadership team, then Shay will take it to...
I mean, prior to it being in this...
Yes, prior to going out, yes. We will also share with you, like, items that we'll discuss in the focus groups, whether or not they use like a 475 million, whether it's a 515, you know what I mean? Those numbers that we've kind of talked about in our capital team, which has a negative impact to taxpayers' tax rate, or goes below or above. They'll determine that, then we'll share that and loop it back to you guys. So yes, you'll see it. I don't know either that they will take a lot of, like, feedback, because again, they want to not be too biased or influenced, but of course, if there's something that's totally off the wall...
Yeah, blaring mistakes, you need to catch.
Yeah, good, really, I'm glad you asked that. Then in April, here's our community what counts. We'll gather a lot of information from focus groups, also from a survey, that then we can come back and generate a whole new type of focus group, like a what counts, with leaders from our cities, people who are... Maybe it's our DCC members, but we'll gather a large group of individuals to look at possibly two ideas, again, after focus group and survey has gone through, we'll develop two bond plans. We want to get pros and cons of what now leaders throughout the 14 municipalities think or have input on. So we'll run that through a what counts process there with two modelings of a bond, and then information presentations will go out, as we normally do, that's part of our culture here in Alpine, to make sure we also get this information out internally to employee groups, our parent elected leaderships at the schools, as well as the PTA, so SCC's PTAs. Then in May, final information presentations and feedback are also presented. We give the Board of Ed, all of you guys are getting the information as it comes along, we'll share it in study sessions, but in May, we will summarize all of the information and give our recommendation from the district leadership team, what are our beliefs as we look at the sentiment of our public? Do we have a confidence level that we could possibly pass a bond? We've always, or the board has, in the past, said, "We won't go out for a bond if we don't have confidence that we will be successful on one." And that's what we want to make sure, that we are vetting clearly, so that we don't set you or the district up for not being successful or something that we go after. So that's pretty much the capital planning, and then...
Okay, so notice, this is capital plan, this isn't bond. This is overall capital for, you know, the five-year capital plan. So a component in that plan is a bond, obviously. And so this is more of a timeline for a potential 2022 bond. One thing about the survey data that I wanted to point out, and I was thinking about when we were talking about that, is Y2 Analytics does a great job at making sure there are participants from all areas throughout the district, and they'll be able to disaggregate that information and help us focus our messaging for the different areas. And that's something that we kind of hit on during the 2016 bond, but I think something that we'll really want to, you know, focus in on even more with the potential 2022 bond is just that messaging for whichever area we're talking about in the district. So this is a potential timeline for a bond. Obviously, the first thing that you'll need to do as a board is create a resolution or pass a resolution in a board meeting. And I believe the 2016 bond, this happened in August, and it was, felt a little too late for us with our information campaign. And so that's why we're hoping to do it in July, which will, especially with mail-in voting, if that's going to happen, just it'll give us more time to get that information out. Now, research also points out that we don't want to do that too soon, otherwise the information will, you know, get saturated and attacked in a lot of different ways. So research kind of says that that's kind of the best timeline for a board resolution is July. So if, after receiving and reviewing all of the information, if that's the will of the board, then we're hoping for that resolution in July.
Does that pick registration with the Attorney General's office?
Yeah, so obviously...
Lieutenant Governor?
Because it says...
I'll check on that.
It says some office. We'll make sure that it's the correct office.
Somebody's...
So yeah...
I'll check on that.
If you do it wrong, it's the Attorney General's office.
You know, we'll make sure it's the correct office that we work with as a group forms, as a political... What's the I for?
Issues.
Issues Committee, or a PAC, Political Action Committee, whatever it is, we'll make sure that it's the correct term with the correct office. So that's what we're looking at as far as July. August, September timeline, this is where we would do that information campaign, getting into the faculty meetings, the parent leadership meetings, cluster, community meetings, city council meetings, just to share that information. And then September, October, we would continue those meetings. Obviously, we would kind of get feedback from those different groups, those parent leadership groups, those faculty meeting groups, before we take it out to the general public, which would be September, October. Just some examples, Kiwanis Club, retirement communities, community meetings, lots of different meetings that we could hold. I'm sure those of you who were involved in 2016, I think we had over 350 meetings that we calculated by the time the bond election was held. And then obviously, you can see their general election. But of course, again, I want to reiterate that even though that date is November 8th, there's that early voting, the mail-in voting that happens prior, and so we'll want to finish up our information campaigns earlier than normal. Any questions, comments on that timeline?
Does early voting start like about the 15-ish? Is it like two weeks ahead?
Yeah, I believe it's around two weeks earlier.
Two weeks?
Okay, moving on then. I want you to notice two words here, information and advocacy. We want to make sure that we are staying within the law. And as a district, as district employees, I think we have an obligation to share all of the information that we can in an information campaign, both internally and externally. You know, we have our faculty meetings. We have a lot of employees that I think would like to share information, but they're worried whether or not they can. And so if you recall, Policy 2240 has a revision from 2020, is the latest revision. And we want to make sure that if we do end up going for a bond, that we are giving our employees all of the information that they would need to answer questions that they're going to receive from parents or from their neighbors or whoever asked them questions. And so that's why we beefed up this political involvement guidelines policy, and we want to ensure that our employees feel comfortable answering any questions or sharing any information that they would like as an employee. And then advocacy, obviously, there are clear expectations that we have to follow. Obviously, you cannot advocate for a bond as an employee with district email, district time, and district buildings, and so on and so forth. So we just want to make sure that we're very clear with this political involvement policy, that we're getting the information out and we're within the guidelines. I know other districts have had a few issues with this a few years ago. I know some of my colleagues have shared some stories with me about wording choices that they used in information campaigns that were deemed advocacy. So we have to be very careful on any word usage and...
They have to take personal check to Lieutenant Governor's office?
Yeah, a colleague of mine did that. So just some information there that we're looking at and making sure that as we get towards this timeline, that we'll be above board with every piece of information.
And the board, you guys are in the same seat. As you guys, some of you are users of social media. If you are sharing information from your board pages, share the district's information. And from your personal, just, you could do whatever you want on your personal devices, personal sites, but when it comes, this is really clear for board members and employees, it's, you're both lumped in this together as far as information and advocacy. And that's where we're going to have to be very careful, because that's where we could make, even though it might not be intentional, we could make an error there. So we need to make sure we're very careful.
I think the word that they used was, "This school will benefit students." And we all agree that the word benefit, they would benefit from it, but they were deemed for using that word benefit.
So Kimberly, just to clarify, you're saying that even though our social media sites are ours individually, that many of us started before we were elected officials, that would be deemed as like an advocacy piece?
If it's your Julie King for ASD School Board, yes. If it's your Julie King, one, because you have two, there's, so there's a difference between the two.
Right.
One is you're recognized in an elected capacity. So that one is the one that it's, you won't be able to do, unless you were sharing the information from the Alpine School District.
Got you.
And you're not saying on that, "Vote yes, everybody," you know what I mean?
Well, apparently, now I'm not.
But Kimberly brings up a good point there. We want you to share the information, and we want employees to share the information. We just have to be very careful about the word usage that we have in that information, to make sure that it's not advocating.
Yeah, a political involvement committee would do more of the advocating. It would be separate, and that's why they have the law in the Utah code for political involvement committees to do things separate from those that are associated with official groups.
Even though we're elected officials that are supposed to advocate?
You can share the information, share the information from the district, you just can't advocate for it.
It's just hard to be an advocate for a child.
And I don't have to advocate?
And not be able to advocate, yeah.
You could say, "Here are the things that a bond could support Alpine School District with."
But you also have a personal...
We have grown, conceal everything, but...
Well, I think it'll be a good idea for us to work with whatever office we need to work with, to run our language by them with our information campaign, so you can tell Governor's office.
Somebody needs to channel like Rob Smith all the time. Shay, Dr. Roger.
Probably I wasn't channeling her.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so there's that. So I just also wanted you guys to know, as we look at projects, the timeline has expanded. Rob brought up the cost, because Sarah asked the question, "What does it cost today?" Our timeline has grown as well, at least a six months different in all. In our last bond, four or five years ago, we were saying an elementary in a year. We need a year and a half, just the simple materials, and making sure that we're also building in the design planning and bidding portion of this, so that it don't look like we have egg on our face in August when the school is not open. We have to work back on our calendar and make sure that we're giving the appropriate time schedule for projects like this to occur. So I just wanted to give you a reminder, for elementaries, 12 to 18 months, middle schools, 18 to 24, high schools, 24 to 30. So earlier, Rob asked you to consider a couple of things for work prior to if we decide to go for a bond for a middle school. We've got a lot of planning that needs to take place for a middle school, if that's determined, so that's the type of work we're looking at. And then, here in a nutshell, the growth that we see a need for, and the reason why we say we'd like you to really consider looking at the bond, obviously, you guys know, it's because the public can weigh in. When it's tax increments, you guys decide. But a bond is, because all are going to contribute for the betterment of our schools and our communities, we can do a lot of work within a bond as well. We like it for many reasons, but two of our biggest is that our voters can weigh in, and we can do a lot of work in a shorter amount of time. If we were only working with capital dollars, it would, how many years? 30 years, 40 years, take a long time. Anyway, we're looking at four elementaries, a middle, and a high school property that helps us be prepared for the future. On our next slide, we've got our aging facilities. Here are some that have come to the top, as we have done informal and formal studies based on enrollment growth. You also saw a publication done by FEMA on those unreinforced masonry facilities that we still have here in Alpine School District. So we look at what, which of these, you know, rise to the top of some of those that will come into the modeling by Y2 Analytics to see what the public sentiment is. Obviously, our two last high schools that were the oldest, 59s, they both need their final phase. We've got some elementary schools that are, you can see Lehigh Elementary is a 51, that's our oldest elementary school, and Sago, very closely situated to Lehigh. our oldest elementary school, and Sago, very closely situated to Lehigh, is a 56. There have been some remodels that have been done in portions of those buildings, but not enough to sustain with the code throughout the entire building. So Sharon and Windsor also. The difference between Sharon and Windsor and Lehigh and Sago, Sharon's and Windsor's populations are not as, well Windsor's, it's medium strong on the enrollment, but Sharon's is quite low. Whereas Lehigh and Sago, they would probably be a larger population if we were to join the two there. But this is an idea of a consolidation merger, because to build four aging facilities with, you know, 290 at one school and 580 at another, those are just a lot different than what we're building schools out in the West. And then obviously, learning powered classrooms, where we decide that sits will be more of the modeling that we look at from our focus groups and public. We could say we're gonna cover all of that in just capital dollars, or we might plug some of it into a bond. That is yet to be determined, but these are some of the things that are guiding the age portion of our facilities. And then finally, we have our summary. So here are kind of some next steps to summarize what we've talked about today. So if you guys get asked, here's where we are. We've awarded the RFP to Y2 Analytics as our third-party consultant to help us and to also take over some of the initial work. Next, we have bond modeling that will be done by the business, you saw that, not next, but it was done first. We will also look at maybe some associated dollars with that that will be coupled into Y2 Analytics' work. And Rob, will you tell us again, the financial advisors, it's two companies, it's Stiefel?
Stiefel is our financial advisor, and then we have Farnsworth and Johnson as our bond.
As our bond, yeah. Those are the two advisors we work with there. And then for the capital planning committee, and three of you serve on that, we'll continue to study hard, updates on membership reports. You know, Jason sends us one at the end of each month. We'll keep looking at the projections. That enrollment will help us know where's the best and most, the highest priority to build our elementaries, middle, or high school. We'll look at the enrollment, identify new projects, where should the rebuilds take place, because these are not easy decisions. They might seem easy, but they're not because it impacts people either positively, or to some, it seems like it's a negative impact. And we have to be prepared for that and aware. And then determine what additional capital projects. We have some areas in the district that might not need a whole, full school rebuild, but they might need additional gyms. We talked about that with our district committee council last Thursday. They still have the same sports that are happening in their schools, like let's say it's Orham High in Tempanogas, they still have girls volleyball, lacrosse, boys and girls. They still have boys and girls soccer, they have boys and girls basketball, boys and girls volleyball. So they don't have, just because their enrollment might be less, they don't have fewer programs to support. So we might look at a couple of special projects recommended by the capital planning committee to be part of bond projects. And then obviously, as Rob has mentioned, we need to stay ahead of the ballgame and make sure we're getting the property in the areas that are showing growth as the city is sharing with us these developments. Any questions?
So Kimberly, thinking of our neighboring district that didn't pass their bond, and now the city has chosen to, I guess, kick the can down the road, and who knows how much it's gonna cost now, even more than what they originally had planned for the original bond that didn't pass, it's gonna be probably more expensive. When we're talking about the gathering voter and patron perception part of it, is there a way to be able to work with Y2 Analytics and make, I know they would have the best way to do this, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but to give our public realistic facts that if this bond doesn't pass, what that will look like and what that will do? And I don't want it to be a scare tactic or a fear tactic, but there definitely has to be some realistic information so they understand that if it didn't pass, that these would be the consequences, and it would be very difficult for our district.
Yes, it was amazing to watch Y2, whether it was Quinn, Danny, or Kyrene, those are the three that we worked with last time, but they know how to formulate those questions to say, "Okay, guys." So as they're working with the focus group, here are the current needs for Alpine School District, here's the quality of education that they're providing. So they will use a lot of information that shows what the district represents, who it represents, how it's performing, quality of education-wise, and then how it's performing tax base-wise, also for taxpayer input. So they'll make sure that they draw on some of those facts that they know of, or maybe a voter is not aware of. Do you recognize there are over 83,000 students in Alpine School District that serve, you know, 90-plus schools? So they'll give all of those facts as they're working in their expert way, because see how I'm kind of mumbling? They won't do that. They're really good at it. They know how to bring out those right questions because they do it so well.
And besides that, our information campaign, we share all of those facts. We share how our growth, enrollment, I mean, the safety issues, the tenure report, you know, all of those things can be part of our information campaign because they are literal facts that we're dealing with right now.
So Kimberly, I know that you talked earlier about how they would present different models as part of the information gathering. And I think you know my opinion on this, but just in case there's any kind of question. Yeah, like the number of schools used to be much, much higher, much, much higher. Like four elementary schools?
That's one city.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, yeah. So like if we could double that, maybe even triple it?
So we do know...
That's the perspective I'm coming from.
Capital Committee, we do know that, because if there's a range...
I want the high end of the range.
Yeah.
Because the needs that we have, and you're aware of this, are significant, and the growth is not going away. Every time I drive past, I'm like, "Oh, look, 20 more houses just got built." So whatever we can do on the high end of any of those models, that's where I'm interested in.
The second time we worked with Y2, and Shane, you were over operations at that point. We were watching, they modeled into the 400s. This is when we were determining, should we go for a 2020 bond? I don't know if you remember that. So we were modeling, or not we, but they were modeling some numbers, they went into the high fours, but they didn't just stay with one number. So yeah, as the capital team has determined, let's maybe give them a ceiling.
Just think maybe we could take off the ceiling and just let them see where it goes.
Yes, yes. So when we present back, I think it's best to keep it not with those numbers at this point, let's work with, we'll set up our appointment with Y2 Analytics, share with them maybe some information from the capital committee, and then we'll present back publicly and transparently with the public what the ranges were and where their, what the feedback was.
Just high-end.
I promise.
High-end.
If you remember on the 2016 bond, when they did the focus groups, they gave the three different models.
I do remember that.
And they didn't go, they didn't suggest the lower one because people did not understand why it wouldn't have a tax increase.
The slight type tax increase was the one that they actually prefer. I do remember that, yeah.
So ask her, good colleague to Alston in the West. I just feel the same way.
But we do have to pass this bond.
I can't.
Did you catch that? I didn't get it.
Well, you know, maybe that's what we emphasize a little more with Y2 Analytics, is determining what price point would be the best to pass the bond and get the most we can.
They really won't tell the board what to do, but what they'll present are, here are the confidence levels, here's what people said. And then you guys have to, you know, struggle with that. But yes, we know what, we know what the ceiling is.
Did you know that's one of the... So we have some identified school needs, and I just wanted to make clear that we don't, we don't have a plan exactly for what's happening with those schools, that that will develop as we develop the capital.
Well, we have a needs, we have a needs assessment. And we present, that's the one that had the big place, Matt, and we shared it again with DCC. But needs, we don't always have the dollars that go along with those. So now we have to prioritize the needs, and we say, okay, as Rob shared, because today we can go after some things with tax increments, or we could go after some things with just annual dollars, it will take a long time for us to do, or we go after local building authorities to say, okay, let's go after money this way, or we go out for a general obligation bond, which allows the public to vote on. We like that. We like that the public gets to vote on it, but we also like that we can do a lot of projects in a short amount of time and get a good share of our needs. We have a lot more needs than we can pay for, than we can afford.
My point is that we have not said, "This is gonna be rebuilt, this is gonna be..." We haven't done that.
No, we've said, we just need to start general with Y2 Analytics to say, "We need about four to six elementary schools. We need a middle school and a high school within the next four to five years."
Yeah, and the learning powered classrooms, is that the right term?
It changed again.
Is it? What's the, I want to use the right term when I'm talking to legislators.
Yeah, do you want to share, I'm just quickly...
We had just tried to put a name on it, so we knew what we were talking about. We were calling it Learning Ready Classroom.
Yeah, that's what I've been using.
But we also have a math program in our elementaries that is called Ready Curriculum, or I-Ready.
It's gonna get mixed up.
And people thought that all the technology was related just to the math. So we changed the name to Learning Powered Classroom to try to...
Power or powered?
Powered.
Powered.
Learning powered.
No, Learning Powered Classroom.
Okay.
So that's why we've been calling it, so that we don't get it mixed up with the math initiative.
We're doing whatever Blaine and his team say.
Yeah, we've been talking to our legislators about fees and how we kind of rely on them, and yeah.
I think that the way I understand it, Ada, or member Wilson, is that our needs, our assessment of our needs will generally exceed our needs. There are more needs that we have, and then we go after a capital campaign of how do we meet those needs as best we can. Y2 Analytics, the whole process will determine this is a comfort level of our patrons in supporting a general obligation bond. Once we know that general comfort level, then we'll match needs to resources that we believe we can get through a general obligation bond. And then the other needs, if we still need to fund, will come through other means, or they'll not be as a higher priority.
So you can't get the cart before the horse in this process.
Right. Identify all your possible needs, and then find the funding sources for those needs to be able to meet those needs. Thank you, Frank, Kimberly, David. Appreciate your work on that, and we look forward to seeing that unfold in future discussions as we move forward on that timeline. For President Clement, I would recommend that the information, the statement, the discussion on district separation, we just saved that for board meeting during superintendent comments, and I can bring that up at that time, or then we use the time we have left for board governance.
Awesome. We're gonna watch a little video for a minute.
Today is a special day all about you.
Really?
Please sit. And now I told you this was here. Kind of.
Oh my God, who are you guys?
We're here to recognize you for all that you do for us.
For everything that you did for me during my surgeries, taking care of me and propping the pillows up just right, and making sure that I was comfortable, and every single day when I woke up, I'd say, "You're so beautiful." A few years back, you invited me to your family's house for Thanksgiving. It seemed like kind of a small thing at the time, but you and your family accepted me into your home, and thank you so much for being such a great friend to me, and maybe I should hug you.
I brought you here because you positively impacted my life. When I first met you, you were coaching, and I got in a lot of trouble, if you remember that.
I remember.
I also remember a phone call, first thing on a Saturday morning.
Put your knife out for yourself.
Right. You had a heart-to-heart. You were saying, "You made a mistake. All right, own up to it and get better."
And you did.
You handled the behind-the-scenes part, and I couldn't do what I do without you.
You got to make it cry. The first class that I had with you, you know, you were truly challenging every student.
You never phoned it in, it never feels fake. It feels like you're paying attention to each and every one of us and what we need. It's super awesome. You're so good at it.
I wanted to bring you here today to recognize you. I appreciate everything you've done for me from when I was a little baby and you helped my mother raise me, and for being in my life and shining positivity and supporting me through every venture.
I remember you said that I was like a warrior. So now, like because of you, instead of scars being a bad thing, scars are like the map of my experience. And now the scars made me feel like a warrior, because you made me feel like a warrior. You made me feel brave.
You guys did this for me, you know, is like, like my Oscar.
I guess I never realized how impactful it was. Thank you for kind of taking a chance on that, okay.
You were a role model. That's priceless. And you deserve to be recognized for it. Thank you, Peter. That's what this bond today is. You know I'll never forget it.
While you're recognizing me, don't forget to recognize yourself. You see what I'm saying?
The power of recognition is immense.
There's something about being recognized that I think shows somebody in a much deeper way how much you appreciate them and what they've meant to your life.
Recognition makes you come alive. It's kind of like electricity. It's a little buzz.
Like a chemical reaction, you know, once one person does it, another person wants to do it, and it becomes contagious.
Getting a moment like this is, oh, super, super amazing, powerful, great, great, great. Thank you. I want to stay here forever.
But here's the big secret.
Okay, so let's talk for a minute. What were some of the reactions that you saw in the video? I love this video. So now I thought, let's just toss out some ideas, not ideas. What are some of the ways that we recognize people in the district right now?
Excellent, excellent. They're all about Alpine.
What management knowledge do you want? Facebook.
Tell them.
Facebook recognition.
So on the way home from JLC on Friday, we were talking about something, and the conversation kind of went to a place of, we are really good at recognizing kids for athletic accomplishments, or academic, or bands, a variety of things, but we don't really have something that just recognizes them for being good people, right? Because sometimes the glue in a classroom is someone who, the person next to them broke the wrist, and they said, "You know what? Let me carry your things to the next class," right? Or the kid that just goes up to a teacher and says, you know, "Can I refill your water bottle?" And so we thought it might be fun to just dialogue for a few minutes. I guess I need to get some historical context here for a minute. Several years ago, a program existed at Lehigh Junior, it was called Good Humans, and it did just that. And so we would bring in district people to come, and we'd send an email ahead of time to parents, saying, "Don't tell your kid it's a surprise." So they had to come to school, not before kids went to class, but also not too late, because it was like a thing. And then you came, Julie came, Mark came, Sarah came, and then we would send groups of people to classrooms. So the kids had no idea why people were coming in. Rob did for each other, that like, they would go in, the person we brought, we brought some of our legislators, and they'd talk about for a few minutes with the kids, like, "What is a good human? What does that even mean?" Right? And then after they kind of had that dialogue to get... And then, after they kind of had that dialogue together, they'd say, "We're here to recognize someone in your class today." And so, they'd pull the kid up and explain what the student did. And every time, I think the classroom just kind of like erupted and applauded. And you never know with kids if they're going to get it right, right? Like, it's just like a please, plus it works. And I think it ended up being as impactful an experience on the people there as it was on the students. And so, we just thought, like, wouldn't it be cool if we could do something like that from us? And whether it's, you know, we try to do like 10 schools a month so we can at least get one kid from each school every year, or it goes by clusters, like, let's have that conversation. And let's see. And sometimes, it may be you've been in a school and... Like, I love when kids open doors for me. It makes me feel like the world is headed in the right direction. It's such a simple thing that I'm like, "Well, thank you." Or, you know, like, someone drops something and someone scoops it up. That gives me hope for the future, which may be funny, but it kind of is. So, anyways, just kind of some thoughts about, what do you think about that? What are the possibilities? I mean, there are probably some schools where you may need to lean on the people in that building. There probably, we know more people off the top of the head than we, you know, we think of.
I've been thinking about this since we talked about it on Friday, a lot, actually. And I think, not just kids, but employees, teachers, you know, staff members. We have people that are just giving it their all every day. But, they're never going to be the one person that gets recognized. You know, they're not going to be this, the kid's not going to be the Sterling Scholar. They're not going to be the quarterback. They're not going to be... And it makes me sad that they go through years with us without sometimes anybody noticing or feeling like somebody notices. Or, what about, you know, a teacher who's doing their best and dealing with, you know, a couple of really hard kiddos in their class that year or whatever? But, they're not going to be the top performer because they've got these two kiddos that are super hard or whatever. And so, I really like this idea. I really like the idea of looking for additional ways for us to recognize the good things that are happening, to recognize those volunteers that are, those parents, you know, that have been there every day. You just, you know, once a week, like clockwork. This whole year, they've been there to help do whatever. Or, when I was SCC Chair at Cedar Ridge, it was their turn to get recognized at board meeting. And I was like, "Oh, this is so cool. This is so great." But, and I still think it's great. And I still think it's awesome. But, I realized, we do about 10 schools a year. We have 100 schools. So, every 10 years, a school's going to have a chance to recognize six people. And it's not that I don't think that's valuable because I think it's super valuable. But, it, but I think over that 10 years, there are probably more than six people who are making that school a great place. So, I would love to see us think of some way, and I don't know if we can get the foundation to support us with it, but I would love us to think of another way, other ways to recognize more students, more staff members in some way.
Well, I just want to recognize that I realize that David Stevenson has been very responsive to our board in our board recognitions. And David, maybe you can talk a bit, a little bit about that direction and redirection that you've tried to...
Sure. You know, we still recognize the sports teams and so on. We send certificates to the school and say, "Please pass these out during the banquet or whatever." But, we have tried to do a focused effort to recognize people who normally wouldn't be recognized. And I agree that there are so many more that we could recognize. You know, we're trying to reach out to just find those folks that normally wouldn't be recognized, that do those little things. And I love this idea of maybe doing more. You know, that a lot of the cover stories for All About Alpine are people who normally wouldn't be recognized for something. So, I love this idea of expanding that and, you know, the What Matters Most Award. Let's look at possibly expanding that. And I'm sure Tyler, Vicky, and the foundation would help in some way to support that.
I think very much it needs to kind of be board-driven if this is the kind of, like, board member-driven. And I just, in the spirit of recognition, I want to recognize how wonderful it is to watch Sarah Hackett at a graduation because she tries to achieve this at her graduation. Would you talk about that, Sarah?
Well, the first time I gave, I had to give a graduation speech, I had a great speech all prepared. And it was all about me. My experiences in India, my experiences in Japan. And after about five years of thinking about it, I thought, "No, no, 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 no. That's all wrong. It's not about me." This was in the thinking phase. I thought, "It's about the kids. And what I need to do is celebrate the kids." So, when I do graduation, it's all about celebrating the kids. Everything I say is about the kids. So...
We have some great examples here. But, I think we can do better, Stacy. I think I can do better as a board member.
Well, I mean, like, I think it would be awesome to have one senior from every school recognized. You know, like, I've always, you know, Utah Valley Magazine does that thing where they talk about a senior that's going places. And I think that's awesome. I love that. But, I, we have so many amazing kids. So many amazing kids. They're doing so many good things.
I think it's also important to, the board can have influence, not just on an individual, but a board can set policies or budget priorities to encourage our classrooms and our schools to recognize individuals. Because that becomes really meaningful as well when it comes from someone that knows you that's recognizing you rather than someone that's a little bit removed. But, there are, I think there are things we can do as a board, as a senior leadership team, but also incentivize and provide resources for schools to be able to have a robust recognition and validation opportunities at the school. Just make sure that we are setting a standard expectation and providing resources so our schools and our communities, we're partnering with them to recognize their outstanding students.
What I think about what you do in kindergarten, right? Where you build "It's All About Me" posters, right? I mean, and then you get to feel like, "Oh, I'm like the kid of the day," or "The Kid of the Week," or whatever kind of thing. And one of my principals is something that I love. He does a principal for the day. So, every sixth grader gets a chance to rotate being a principal for the day. And it was hilarious because one of the kids was doing it when we were having an SCC meeting. The principal turned to him and he's like, "But, okay, like, when you start getting bored here, you can go to another task the secretary has ready for you." And the kid lasts maybe 90 seconds in the SCC meeting. He's like, "Yeah, I'm out." So, it was kind of funny when the kid was done. But, I think that's, kind of that same concept, right? Is, you know, principal for the day, like, being the "All About Me" kind of a dynamic, but on a much larger scale. I know that our new principal at Wesley, Dr. Smith, has done a big push where he's like, "Hey, we want to recognize all kids. So, if you have a kid who's doing something outside of school we may not know about, let us know so that we can celebrate that student." And I think that's been a good thing. But, I think what you're talking about is we do. We have so many kids who, they're not going to be the lead in the school play. They're not going to be first chair. They're not going to be, you know, the kid that's like the top in a certain area. But, they're still amazing kids. And kids who maybe don't have 4O GPAs, but are amazing humans. And how do we recognize and notice all of those kids? And, you know, we've talked a little bit about, you think, throughout this year, about what, how important it is to be seen and heard and valued. And this is basically taking that just up on a grander scale and a more intentional scale of... And I loved doing the Good Humans when it was at Lehigh Junior. It was so fun and to see parents who were, maybe some of them not used to having their kids celebrated and the reaction the parents had, and kids who weren't used to being celebrated. There were sometimes this kind of awkward pause of like, "I don't know what this feels like. I don't know what this feels like to recognize." And I think it's an awesome idea. And anything we can do to help increase that connection for kids to feel connected to their schools, I think is always going to be a win.
It will be interesting to, as Annalise and her team puts that culture and climate survey together for schools, and we start comparing that, to look at what is the correlation between validation and acknowledgement efforts at that school and attachment. To say, "Okay, why does this school have such a high level of attachment? Kids to one another and kids to the school. Look at all these things they do to validate and recognize and honor those students." As you start having that data set and you can start making comparables and say, "Oh, here's, this seems to be a significant contributor to student attachment and connection and success in these efforts that a school is doing to recognize and validate students."
I was just going to say, towards the end of the video, there's this moment where someone says, "It's contagious." And what I loved most about, so what kids got when they came, we had T-shirts printed. The front said, "Good Human." The back said, "The world is full of good people if you can't find one, be one." And what was super fun about that is kids would wear that shirt all day. And you know, junior high kids are growing. So, I have seen kids, years later, walking down the street with this shirt that's three sizes too small, but they are going to wear that shirt. And it was, it was just kind of... And one of the things we saw is, as more, and, you know, our president did a great job of saying, "We're only recognizing one right now." But, you know, like, be patient, it's coming. And so, we just saw this wave of, "Well, hold on." And so, it just had this really positive effect. And I just, I love the contagious piece, David.
An example that's regarding employees just happened yesterday. And I think some of you have read this KSL article on a bus driver. He's a substitute bus driver. But, it was just interesting to go in and read the comments on KSL of like professional people saying, "Wow." Just the comments, the bus driver made, they want to implement in their everyday life of just saying hi to a coworker the first thing in the morning. What this bus driver does every day, you know, he can make a difference. Just a great example of recognizing someone who didn't earn, you know, the mechanic of the year for Bus Crod or something like that. But, just a great bus driver, substitute bus driver.
I also want to just make an observation. How, in those examples, how important was the camera to the person being honored? I don't think the camera made a whole lot of difference to that person. An expression of gratitude or recognition probably would have meant just as much then in a very intimate setting as in front of a camera. I just think we need to have a culture of being appreciative and it's not always about the camera or being in the magazine or being at the board meeting. It's just about being expressive in the moment of every gratitude that you feel.
Ada, I'm glad you said that. Last Wednesday, we went and we split up as a leadership team and met with East and West Transportation at about 6:00 in the morning and had some hot fresh donations just to thank them for what they do, transporting our kids to and from school safely every day. And we all came back from our experience and just talked about, honestly, so... This is the good part about, I think, the things that you're talking about and Stacy's trying to say that's contagious, is it felt good for us who were saying thanks and to also hear their genuine response and acceptance of, "Now, wait, who are you guys and what do you do? You're saying thanks for..." Okay, I mean, it was interesting. And then, they got to share how much they love what they're doing and that it's the greatest job ever. And it was about a month and a half ago that Shane said, "Okay, internally, let's make sure we're getting to all of the departments and just not on a Christmas, Merry Christmas." But, he said, "Let's have it happen randomly throughout the rest of the year into departments so that they can feel our genuine appreciation." That's the contagion I think you're talking about. And I love the reminder today to say, "Let's get that going." As we're developing, David and I, with our committee, next year's theme and working on what, you know, continuing to focus on what matters most and moments that matter, those moments are going to include gratitude and, you know, recognizing other people. And how do we do that will be so important. So, I love, I love the reminder of today's message. So good and so timely.
Thank you. And we're out of time, so...
Thank you. I appreciate it. Now, read, read, read.
Yeah.
For this collaboration, three weeks ago, we brought in poet and storyteller Jimmy Santiago Baca, who was able to talk to 13 different classrooms about his experiences. In each class, he and visual artist Demi Macheras encouraged students to tell and write their stories and submit image designs for a mural. Diverse students shared their stories and connected with each other in powerful ways. One student remarked that she didn't realize how much she had in common with the other students that initially seemed different to her. The AP art kids and the design team kids contributed imagery to put into the mural. Our professional artist, Demi Macheras, used images, stories, symbols that the kids came up with to make three different proposals. We presented decent students last Monday. We gathered feedback, and about 45 drafts later, we have finally come up with the final mural design. It is awesome to watch this design come to life. It is fun to see the mural take shape step by step. The goal of the mural is to tell the story of Timpanogus. As part of our mural, we chose to highlight five outstanding individuals who have also made contributions to the mural project. It's been a balance of the macrocosm, Timpanogus High School, and the microcosm, individual students, to represent our school. These five students also represent different groups, but all exemplify the six Cs. From the left to the right, we have Finn Peterson, who is a musician and athlete. Finn succeeds at setting and achieving goals with little to no outside help. They also excel at finding solutions that encompass the needs of all groups involved. Finn is a gift to our school and community.
We've worked our recognition into kind of a report about our school. And it's nice that nobody sits in the front seats because rather than having people stand up here, when I say AICAP, and David will give you that certificate, and then let's have you sit down here because it's so uncomfortable just to keep standing there in front of everybody. Oh, I keep talking. And David promised, well, he told me I could go for two hours. He tried to go for two hours. Five years ago, one Alpine School District formerly adopted our vision for learning, Tippecanoe High School unapologetically and relentlessly began pursuing knowledge for skills and dispositions. Instead of continuing to teach content knowledge in isolation, only hoping that students develop skills and dispositions. It may sound like only a semantic difference, but it is a fundamentally different education to start with skills and dispositions as the explicit goal, and then artfully use rich curriculum in welding, English, PE, or math as the vehicle to intentionally take students to that six Cs or deep learning destination. Our teachers have been enthusiastic about this challenge to reshape 21st century education. Our district vision for learning is now perfectly reflected in the Utah State Office of Education's Portrait of a Graduate, which there's a copy in there. If you haven't already, I recommend comparing and contrasting the state Portrait of a Graduate because it is, it 100% validates and supports the trail Alpine School District raised five years ago. This graphic right here, which is also in your packet, is just a simple way of overlaying the ASD vision for learning on the, with the state vision for learning. You'll note that it's almost identical. I wish I could recognize our entire staff tonight for their work around our vision for learning because they've done incredible work to deliberately foster connection and wellbeing in students and themselves as they deliberately develop the six Cs in students and themselves. But tonight we honor two teachers representing the entire staff. First is Mrs. Armin Harris. Mrs. Harris has been at Tippecanoe since 1996 when we first opened our doors. She epitomizes connection and wellbeing in the way she works with student leadership to help all kids feel that it's a great day to be a T-Wo. She reminds the admin regularly that school should be fun, because sometimes we're not as fun. And whether she's supervising the senior sunrise or the homecoming dance, she is truly one of her folks that makes THS what it is. She works diligently to develop the six Cs in her students as a history teacher and AP US history teacher. Thank you, Armin. Mr. Michael Nagro. Yeah, I told them they could sit down. Yeah. So, I thought we'd do pictures of the AICAP or something. Mr. Michael Nagro fosters deep learning as well, as well or better than any teacher in our state. There is no gatekeeping to eliminate kids from the honors track at Tippecanoe High School, which is kind of a big deal. There is no, in fact, he does not, he does just the opposite, creating a culture of inclusion for any student to get into the honors track. He deliberately creates a culture of connection in his classroom, and though he has incredibly high standards, students always know that he is there to support them, and they meet his expectations. If you want to see a true academic outlier sometime, seriously, take a look at his AP English data over the last few years. It's phenomenal. Thank you, Michael. Accomplishing our district vision for learning is not possible without many others fully owning the vision. Here are two incredible supports. Oh, and I have really great pictures here. There's next. And you'll notice those are around our two vision goals, which haven't changed for five years, which is also a big deal. We'll talk about why, but. Here are two other incredible supports to students and teachers at THS. Diane Berlin is a mom of six, former and current T-Wols, but she has also become a school mom. She has also become a school mom to many more of our students who need the most support. She works diligently as an aide in our English as a Second Language class, supporting our many students who are learning English. She also works as a student advocate, encourage our most at-risk students in attendance, academics, and whatever else students need to succeed. And she chases a lot of kids in the halls and they're not supposed to do that. Thank you, Diane. Suzie Haxton has also been at THS as our vice chair. She's been here also since, since the beginning. Suzie flawlessly keeps us organized and compliant from a student information standpoint, but maybe more important, Suzie is always advocating for students that are struggling. She fully nurtures and supports our THS values where we strive to value accept and respect each other with differences, nurture, maintain, grow mindset, self-govern, and effectively problem solve. Thank you, Suzie. At THS, our motto is that we are a community of one striving for excellence. We can't be, genuinely be a community of one without our patrons. Jennifer Jensen and Michelle Thompson, if you guys want to come up, lead our PTSA this year, and they are cohesive and aligned with our mission, vision, goals, and values. They frame all their efforts around our two vision goals of connection and wellbeing and deep learning. Keep forgetting to hit the pictures. They give selflessly of their time to support our mission, vision, goals, and values. One recent example of their involvement is in the phenomenal collaboration between our art teacher, Mrs. Davis, the design team teacher, Mrs. White, and our LIA with Mr. Drake. Their input and participation in this project has been invaluable. Thank you, you guys. So we decided to honor students today that are, have been closely involved in this collaboration I just mentioned that the PTA has been a part of. And because we're right in the middle of it, we're actually not even quite done with it. I'll show you a picture. This is the artist's rendering of what it will look like. I have a picture later that shows what it looked like this morning, and it's, it's pretty amazing to see. I will introduce the first two students, and then they're going to introduce the other five. So Paige Blumer and Anna Penn are going to come up. Paige Blumer is a self-motivated and enthusiastic winner both in and out of the classroom. She has embraced the challenge of moving from out of state in the middle of high school to accomplish great things like participating in this mural. Her happy place is with a brush or a pen in her hand and a sketchbook in her lap. Anna Pennrod is on the THS design team. Anna is endlessly curious and quick with it. She can write a poem, sketch a picture, make you laugh, and make it seem effortless. Maybe we'll ask, no, I'm just kidding. In spite of that, she does work very hard to develop her talents and accomplish her goals. Both Paige and Anna have been integrally involved in leading, in supporting this collaborative project, and both exemplify our district's vision for learning. Anna found out in this process that, actually, they're cousins, so. So I'll turn the time to them to introduce our students. And I, yes, we have a few students here. I wish all could be here, but not all of them are here.
For this collaboration, three weeks ago, we brought in poet and storyteller Jimmy Santiago Baca, who was able to talk to 13 different classrooms about his experiences. In each class, he and visual artist Demi Macheras encouraged students to tell and write their stories and submit image designs for a mural. Diverse students shared their stories and connected with each other in powerful ways. One student remarked that she didn't realize how much she had in common with the other students that initially seemed different to her. The AP art kids and the design team kids contributed imagery to put into the mural. Our professional artists, Demi Macheras, used images, stories, symbols that the kids came up with to make three different proposals. We presented these to students last Monday. We gathered feedback, and about 45 drafts later, we have finally come up with the final mural design. It is awesome to watch this design come to life. It is fun to see the mural take shape step by step. The goal of the mural is to tell the story of Tippecanoe. As part of our mural, we chose, we chose to highlight five outstanding individuals who have also made contributions to the mural project. It's been a balance of the macrocosm, Tippecanoe High School, and the microcosm, individual students, to represent our school. These five students also represent different groups, but all exemplify the six Cs. From the left to the right, we have Finn Peterson, who is a musician and athlete. Finn succeeds at setting and achieving goals with little to no outside help. They also excel at finding solutions that encompass the needs of all groups involved. Finn is a gift to our school and the community. We have Nepai Matagi, who drew an awesome, awesome design as we are incorporating. He is an outstanding athlete and exemplifies kindness and respect. Then we also have, we have Drew Clark, who's in the LIA presidency and has been very enthusiastic and passionate putting together this project.
Is Drew here?
No, she had six hours of dance this afternoon.
We also have Carolina Casalis. Oh, okay. Carolina is a student who has been at THS for seven weeks. She has recently immigrated from Colombia. She got really excited to share her story, and although she has only been here for a short time, she has thrived at THS. Lastly, we have Talon Gardner, who's been in the Portuguese immersion program and is a student leader at THS, and according to Mrs. Davis, is about the nicest kid you'll ever meet. And then we've also included a crowd of silhouette students cheering below to make it feel representative of the entire student body and how we can only be at our best when we support each other in a community. As amazing as this mural is going to be, the real value is in the collaborative process that went into it. Through this process, students have further developed the six Cs. It's brought us closer together as students, and we have learned much in the process about telling our story and working together to create the final product. Dozens of students have been working hard to bring this mural to life. We plan to unveil mural Friday in our newly remodeled commons area at 1:00 PM. We invite all ASD board members and district leaders to come and participate if you'd like.
Okay, I'll keep talking while he gets those pictures and certificate. Well, this particular process and product, and you can see this was Friday, and one of the things that amazes me about this picture is, I'm wondering how any teacher can take that many kids all working on the same art project and have it turn out really beautiful. It reminds me of band where you give every kid a noise maker, and then they turn it into music. This was the mural this morning. You can see it's coming together really, really well. And one of the things, you can go ahead and take, I'll just keep going. I think that's truly the quietest I've ever heard of board meetings for about 37 years. While this particular process and product have been valuable, like going to the dentist for a checkup and cleaning, daily deep learning and connection is the most important cultural element in any school, just like brushing teeth every day is more important in the long run than just a dental checkup and cleaning. At THS, our teachers work diligently and deliberately to create a culture of daily deep learning. Having lived our ASD vision for learning for the past five years, we have learned a few things about deep learning that are backed up by best practice literature. Number one, we are confident that no school will fully or effectively get to improve test scores by focusing on test scores. We won't get to authentic equity or engagement by focusing on equity or engagement. But a real focus on our vision for learning, though messy a bit, will always result in better test scores, equity, and engagement. As Michael Fulon says, "Deep learning attacks emerging issues of both wellbeing and equity." A focus on, number two, is a focus on literacy will not always result in deep learning, but a focus on deep learning will always result in better literacy. But the starting point matters. Number three, "An authentic focus on our vision for learning brings back the joy of learning for students and teachers alike." Another Michael Fulon quote. "It is the unifying vision that harnesses the heart of the classroom teacher, and no real reform will ever happen without harnessing teachers' hearts." Number four, "When we truly create a culture of deep learning in our school, every room becomes a wellness room." And number five, last but not least, Michael Fulon, who is one, is not one to overstate things, has said, quote, "Ultimately, deep learning is about the viability of the human race." We are grateful to work at Tippecanoe High School. We are grateful to be a part of a district that has pioneered setting this vision of knowledge for skills and dispositions, and for setting a vision that is supported 100% by the USC Portrait of a Graduate. Thanks for the work you do to help support us in accomplishing this vision for every student.
Dr. Jensen, don't sit down for a minute. When I saw this.
Didn't you say anything about question and answer?
This isn't a question and answer. It's worse. I've been working with him for maybe five, six years now, and what they're doing at Tippecanoe High School is remarkable in terms of deep learning and the six Cs. And so would you tell them what happened at your school? Have you gotten needed by about 40 people this month?
It's, it's been really fun. The just, the State Office of Education came down to visit this the first week after Christmas break, and they brought a team of seven from their teaching and learning. They were so excited, and I would even use the word giddy about what we're doing to accomplish Portrait of a Graduate, because they have not seen any other high school that's even close to what we're doing deliberately and intentionally to do that. So about two weeks ago, I think two weeks ago today, about, they brought down a team of about 40 people from the State Office of Education, including four state board members, that came and they visited 20 classrooms, and we talked about leading that culture of deep learning. And it was, it was very validating and very celebratory, and we actually took our school leadership team up there today and met with the teaching and learning folks to learn more of how we can continue to foster this, this culture and this work.
It's been excellent. Now, I have to tell you, I have a grandson that just graduated barely from, it wasn't their fault.
No, it was our fault.
No, it wasn't.
It was our fault he graduated.
Yeah. So I asked him, because we've talked about the six Cs as a district for quite a while now. I said, hey, have you ever heard the six Cs? He went, oh, we've talked about it all the time in every class. Yes, they're doing it right. So thank you so much for what you're doing and what your faculty is doing. And also, if there are people here who came to support your students or your faculty members or your community members, would you stand up so we can recognize you as well?
Dr. Jensen, thank you for representing your school so well, for the work that you do to support that community and move the vision for learning forward. Appreciate the way you represented Tippecanoe High School and Alpine School District. I've recently been in conversation with State Superintendent Dixon, and just remarked about how engaged they were in the visit, how appreciative they are of you and your team and the work you're doing. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, now it's time for community comments, and we have a statement we'd like to read before. If you need to leave at this point, go ahead. Patrons who wish to address the board are asked to sign up prior, and we do have a list here. This opportunity will be reserved for patrons living within the Alpine School District boundary. Individuals living outside of ASD can submit written comments to the Board of Education. This is time on the agenda to allow for up to 30 minutes for a public comment. 10 patrons will be given a maximum time of three minutes each to discuss the board. Written comments can be submitted at alpineschoolboard/schoolboard. Speakers should introduce themselves by giving, by stating their name. The board will not engage in a discussion during the public comments, but may arrange a follow-up time for you to speak with a staff member. Personnel issues are not appropriate discussion items for an open meeting environment. If you have a personnel concern, we ask that you contact a member of the administration or put your concerns in writing and address it to the Board of Education. And lastly, the Alpine School District is a legislative body, and as such, it functions under the same operational rule as other similar bodies such as the state legislature. Public input during its formal meetings is to assist the board in escalating public attitudes and interests. It's not a forum for open discussion or debate between board members and patrons. So with that lengthy discussion in mind, we only have actually one person who has signed up, and that's Heather Lambert. So Heather, come on up.
Okay, I just want to give a warning that there may, this is a trigger warning that I will be mentioning suicide, so if you're uncomfortable with that, please step outside. Good evening, and thank you for all you did with your students. Oh my gosh, I can't believe I'm starting, sorry. I want to say that I'm not here to argue or yell at any of you. In fact, I'm here for the opposite. I want to work with you, so if I happen to get heated at any point, please know that it is not anger, but passion, and I hope that you share my passion as well. On February 9th, the day my baby girl turned 12, another 12-year-old ended his life. Drake Hardman was a fun, loving, caring little boy who used to live in my neighborhood. But he was tortured by another student at school, and the only way that he could see to end his pain was to take his own life. The track record for schools handling bullying, if at all, is not good. I've had several parents tell me the principal brushed them off or told them that there's nothing that they can do. We must do better. I watched a documentary last night on Netflix, and it was called Bully. It was truly devastating to watch. Drake was not the first to take his life as a response to his torture, and he will certainly not be the last. I'm here to ask tonight to join forces with you. I want to help develop a solution to end this bullying pandemic. Let's create a task force. I have pages of notes that I took while I watched that documentary last night. I have ideas, and I know that together, all of us, teachers, parents, board members, district employees, everybody, if we can come together, we can find a solution and we can help our children. Students cannot learn in an environment where they feel nothing but fear, torture, and dread. Our students aren't learning anything but learning to stay out of school and to hide or to take their own lives. We have to do this because another child's life literally depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that has not signed up ahead of time? That being the case, Dr. Ruiz, perhaps this would be a good time for you to talk with Heather Lambert and maybe discuss what we're, what we're doing and maybe what we could be doing in this instance. This is an important and a tender issue for sure. Okay, now let's turn the time over to Dr. Farnsworth for routine business.
Thank you, Board Member Hacken. You have received your routine business. This board meeting consists of LIA-specific licenses and a single student trip request by AF High Band for next fall, and I recommend your approval of the routine business.
Okay, do I hear a motion for approving the routine business?
I'm going to approve the routine business.
You have a second? Second? Okay, it has been, is there any discussion?
I have a question. Here's my only concern with this trip. Concern is that they are asking for three days of school to miss, and that will mean they will be unable to attend the state championships, which will be the week before. Are they understanding that? Because we did talk about this last fall, that somehow they've been taking four days of school off when they've been taking this trip, and that is not allowed in current policy.
They, we will remind them that they would need to ask for an exception, but it would be an exception if they were seeking for an additional day.
Okay, because we have not previously allowed a fourth day exception. We've allowed some other exceptions to the policy, but I'm not aware of any other fourth day exceptions we've allowed. So I just, I mean, I just feel like if we're going to have something in policy, we need to apply that evenly district-wide. If we want to change our policy, that's something different, but it needs to apply to everyone. So my concern is, and I just want to get it on record now, that I'm not supportive of them taking a fourth day that term, so they need to make their plans accordingly.
We'll make sure they're aware of that.
Is there any, any other discussion? Okay, that being the case, Board Member Clement has made a motion. Board Member Wilson has seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes, thank you. Next action item is authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds. So we will consider that at this point. I need to read the, the exact language to make sure that we are legally in line. We will consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds by the local building authority of the district. We need a motion here? A motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the issuing, issuance of lease revenue bonds.
Okay, so I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds. Am I doing this right? Okay, by the local building authority of the district.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Board Member King to adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds by the local building authority of the district, and a second by Board Member Mainland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In that case, we will convene as a board of trustees for the local building authority under the direction of Dr. Mark Clement.
So now we need to convene as the board of trustees of the local building authority, and we need a motion to convene.
I move that we convene as the board of trustees of the local building authority.
Second.
A motion from Julie, a second from Amber. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will now consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds by the authority, since we're now meeting as the board of trustees of the local building authority.
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds. I'll second it.
Motion from Julie, a second from Sarah. Any discussion?
I think they would like some explanation from our business administrator. This is the appropriate time.
I'm happy to share. Thank you, Board Member Wilson.
Thank you, Board Member Wilson. What this transaction will do is authorize the sale of up to $35 million of bonds to finance a couple of projects that we need. Our district continues to grow, and we need to meet the needs of students in our community. The $35 million would build an elementary school, allow the board to complete a transportation facility, and would allow some groundwork to be done for additional buildings that we need that may have some groundwork that's needed before we can build on a particular piece of property. So that's the three projects that we would propose with this transaction. You have in your packet a summary, an executive summary, of the key terms and conditions that we have. We always establish those parameters. So when we go into the bond market, we are open and transparent with people who underwrite or purchase our bonds. We appreciate of our team, Brandon Johnson from Farnsworth &amp; Johnson, Matt Duckdale, Preston Kirk from Steefel. I think we've got both of them here with us tonight. And my right hand, Randy Upton, our budget director, is here from our business team. So that would be what the purpose is, the dollar amount. We usually issue these bonds over 15 to 17 years, and it would be in a competitive sale. And so our team would recommend your approval. In study session for the public who might be here, we talked about two factors that have caused this. Inflation is a very significant issue. We're very concerned about the cost of building schools. If you've had any kind of building project personally, an addition on your home or have purchased a home, it's much higher today than it was just a very short while ago. We're also concerned about inflation. The sooner we can get into the market, hopefully the better interest rate that we can get. Both of those will save taxpayer dollars, which this board has a stewardship for and takes very seriously. So that's the details, and any additional questions, we would recommend your approval.
Could you do one more thing? Could you explain to the public what the differences between a bond that you go out and vote for and what we're doing tonight?
Sure. Thank you, Board Member Hacken. Lease revenue bonds are an annual appropriation. The board basically appropriates the payment on a bond, and because it's subject to an annual appropriation, it carries a rating that's one notch below our AAA rating. So in this case, a lease revenue bond costs a little bit more to finance than if we were to issue a general obligation bond. The difference between the two again is annual appropriation required versus a general obligation bond. That's voted on by our public after a bond campaign with a majority of vote. The successful vote is binding the full faith and credit of Alpine School District regardless. And so that's the difference. The full faith and credit here in a GO bond versus a lease annual appropriation revenue bond, and that's why it carries just a slightly lower rating than the GO bond. Is that helpful?
I think another thing that maybe for the public is we have a lot of growth in this area, and if we did not have a new school there, we would have to either have a sixth-grade center or have other costs that would not be permanent. And so this really provides us an opportunity to solve this problem long-term instead of putting Band-Aid solutions until we can get the bond passed.
I think the other thing, I mean, we're basically talking about construction of a school in Eagle Mountain with this. I think things to be aware of is that we have two schools in Eagle Mountain that are over 1,200 students, and it's a significant issue, and we do all the things, right? Like we move the portables and we, you know, give extra... We do all these kind of things, but the reality is the growth in Eagle Mountain is so significant that we can't wait. We can't wait, we can't delay. And I think even this next school year, while this school is being constructed, there may be some additional supports we need to provide to some of those schools to assist them kind of get away with that hump, because 1,200 students in an elementary school is a significant task. It's a significant task for teachers who have to shift classrooms and accommodate the needs of students. It's a significant task from bus drivers to our nutrition workers to our aides to our administrators. It's a heavy pull, and we want to make sure that we're solving this problem for our community. So I appreciate the board's support in this and making sure that that community is supported in their student needs.
Can I just add my support? I want to recognize the immediacy of this need. In my cluster, we have been through this at Vineyard Elementary. The stress on the staff and the administration and the community is significant, and I just want to say thank you to this board for supporting me in that decision, and I support this decision to build this school in Eagle Mountain immediately.
I also would like to add my support. When you get an elementary school that large, that's as large as a junior high school, and at some point you run out of playground space to put more trailers on. You just can't. You run out of classroom space, you run out of lunchroom space, and so the need is urgent, it's immediate, and I would give full support to this project.
Any discussion? So I am going to restate, I believe you made a motion to support LBA Resolution 2022-001. Is that correct?
Yes.
To authorizing issuance of lease revenue bonds. I just want to make sure we got that language in there. Am I okay? Okay. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm excited that we're able to solve this problem in a way that preserves taxpayer funds and is a permanent solution to the problem. We now need a motion to reconvene as the Board of Education.
I move that we reconvene as the Board of Education.
Motion from Sarah Beeson. Second from Stacy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now reconvened as the Board of Education. And if that feels a little bit awkward to you, we're... You're not alone. But now we're... Now the other hat's on, and we're back in our board meetings, so go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Clement. We have several action items, so we'd like to turn the time now to Dr. Farnsworth to conduct those items.
Thank you, Board Member Hacken. We appreciate Brandon and Matt being here and their support of our needs to fund our schools. The first resolution I would recommend your approval of is Resolution 2022-007, authorizing the tentative approval of the capital budget for fiscal year '23. We reviewed that in study session, and I'd like to invite Rob Smith, business administrator, to share any thoughts he has on that.
Thank you, Superintendent. This again allows us to get to work. Capital projects have a longer timeline, ordering buses, ordering air conditioning units, ordering boilers, just even regular materials. So by moving this up a couple of weeks, we can get the orders in, and Kimberly and her team can get ready to go to work as soon as school's out, so we can maximize the window and get as many things done before students come back in the fall. It also takes advantage, again, it's a hedge against the price risk, and inflation is a real thing, and it'll be a real thing for a while. And so we've discussed this at length. Our budget committee here has recommended and thoroughly vetted this. Thanks again to our budget team and those that do the work behind the scenes, and for our physical facilities team that'll carry it out. So unless you have additional questions, would recommend your support of the capital budget, just under $40 million of projects for fiscal year '23.
Final approval will take place in Jim and Dr. Bush.
Do we have a motion to...
I move that we approve Resolution 2022-007 with the addition of the Skyridge Turf Field and selling the current lacrosse field.
We have a motion by Stacy Bateman or Board Member Bateman, and a second by Board Member Bonner. Do we have a discussion? Any discussion?
So the Skyridge Field is the last field to get turf, and it's been pushed off for several years. And so this is important to get done now, because once we have turf, then all of the groups can use the field, so bands can be on the field and soccer can be on the field, and selling the current lacrosse field will pay for this, so it's a win for everybody.
And just to clarify, in addition to the Skyridge Field, there are other projects that the board is authorizing as if this resolution passes to proceed forward on that are included in the capital plan.
Yes. Really quick, I don't know if we can make that motion here, because your motion was to do the field and sell the property. I don't know that we're ready to... Are we ready to make that motion? Is that not something that would need to be noticed?
You can make that motion as a contingent. If we sell the property, that will be followed in another resolution that will come to you on the actual...
Okay, so we're okay. All of a sudden, I just thought of that.
So the motion is fine as it is, and what Board Member Bateman was trying to do is say this basically will cover that, and by approving the resolution as number, you've approved the capital budget that you have. So that clarifies.
Yeah, just to clarify, the Skyridge Turf Field was not on the capital plan, but this is a contingency plan that we have come up with to help them get their field. So it is not on the capital plan as is in the board documents. I just want to say thank you to all those who've put eyes on these. It's a big long list. The wish list is even longer, but I think we did good work in prioritizing it properly.
I just want to make a couple of comments about the capital budget. There are a couple of different ways that we pay for capital projects. Obviously, we saw a different one just a minute ago. We can use our LBA. Another way to pay for capital projects is to go out for a bond and have voters authorize a certain amount of money. Another way that we pay for needed capital projects is just in our regular budget that we approve every year. And so I just want to make it clear to different communities that sometimes projects are paid for different ways, but that doesn't mean that one community or another is not receiving anything. And I want to point out that on this current capital budget is an incredibly needed project at Lone Peak High School, which is we need our visitor bleachers on our football field replaced. And that sounds like not a big deal until you come and watch the entirety of American Fork High School try to fit onto bleachers that hold like 200 people. So there is a massive safety issue with that, because we're just way exceeding capacity. The bleachers 25 years ago were not built for a six-day school. That's just all there is to it. And so I'm really appreciative. I think there's been kind of in the back of our head knowledge about that issue for a while, but it kind of came to a head this last football season, and I really appreciate our capital facilities team taking a look at that and being aware of it and saying, oh, yep, yeah, that's a problem. We should probably get on that. And then our board members being willing to fund it, because unfortunately, it's not cheap, and nothing is lately, it seems like. But there are other projects in this capital budget for other areas in the district that are so needed, but then when we go out for a bond, someone might say, or if we do, someone might say, well, our area's not getting anything. Well, your area got things every year on the capital budget, and now we need other dollars for other big projects. And so I just want to point that out and make sure that we're helping the public to be aware that we're paying for capital projects in multiple schools in multiple areas every year, but they come out of different budgets. So anyway, I'm really appreciative of this particular budget, because those bleachers scared me this last fall.
Any other comments?
Kimberly, is this going to be an issue for Frank, the amendment, or is this going to work out? I cannot remember the timeframe from the last capital...
We were very general in our wording that we passed along this in board communications. Those were definitely... You'll see, I presented this at the district community council on Thursday night. You'll see Skyridge on here as well as the Lone Peak.
So it's still okay with Frank's timeline?
But it's here in this portion that Amber's referring to, other capital projects that are done with different buckets of funding. These larger projects that we need to do quicker and for new growth or extremely aging facilities, we can take and tackle more of them through a GO bond. So Frank will be okay? Yes.
Just wanted to check, because I know that sometimes we keep stuff on Frank, so just want to make sure.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of Resolution 2022-007, authorizing tentative approval of the capital budget for '23? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. With the addition. All in favor of Resolution 2022-007, authorizing tentative approval of the capital budget fiscal year '23 with the amendment? Please say aye. Any say, any nay?
Will we all pause with the aye, because people started talking? Say, ask us again, Sarah. Sorry, the third time. We will get it right. Just ask us again to say aye or nay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. It passes, okay? All right, Dr. Farnsworth.
Yes, the next resolution. Thank you for your discussion and approval of that. The next resolution is 2022-008, providing the issuance of general refunding bonds. And again, we will turn some time to our business administrator, Rob Smith, to give a brief explanation of that.
Thank you, Superintendent. You know, it's funny, when the business items come up, a lot of people leave. We don't take it personal on the business team, but, you know, we do have a sense of humor, which for accountants is a little bit rough, but just, we're always looking for ways to save dollars. We have an opportunity to refinance our 2014 series bonds and save about 5% or about $1.2 million. This is critical. We did a similar refunding transaction in November, and before interest rates increase significantly, we think this is a great opportunity to position us for future capital needs, save some taxpayer dollars, and refinance this issue. So pending your questions, that would be our recommendation from our business team to refinance the 2014 bonds and save a little bit of money.
Do I have the resolution? I mean, a motion? Thank you.
I move that we pass Resolution 2022-008, providing the issuance of general refunding bonds.
A second motion.
We have a motion by Board Member King and a second by Board Member Clement to approve Resolution 2022-008, providing the issuance of general refunding bonds. Any discussion?
So Rob, just to clarify, make sure, we're so... The anticipated savings is $1.2 million on this series, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that this makes sense, because it helps to... Well, with our taxpayers, they are used to bonds being layered and the net effect being pretty much zero, and this just helps to perpetuate that expectation in our voters.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of Resolution 2022-008, providing the issuance of general refunding bonds? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay, motion passes. We have three discussion action items that have to do with policy, so Dr. Farnsworth, back to you.
Thank you, Board Member Hacken. I would invite Kimberly Bird, Executive Director of Internal Relations and Operations and Policy and Other Things, to come forward.
I've got a timer.
We have three policies, Policy 9054. We are suggesting a rewrite of that. Policy 9056, a retiring of that policy, and then a rewrite of Policy 9058. I appreciate Kimberly and those who are on the policy committee for the Board of Education and the continual work that they do to update and revise and improve our policy. and the continual work that they do to update and revise and improve our policies. So we'll turn some time over to Kimberly to share that information. And we would recommend, if the board feels appropriate, to take action on those policies, the recommended changes.
Thanks, Superintendent. To start with 54 that's up there, we had a current policy called changing county precinct boundaries. And we all are aware that those precincts will now be a little bit different due to our redistricting. So our committee went to our current policy and we giggled a little bit at some of the ways it was listed because it was last done in 2003. So this one needed a complete rewrite. We have sent this through legal counsel to make sure we have everything in place because we have had a current redistricting. And there will be some elections that will be coming up. And this is just good information for people to, the public, to know and understand, as well as our current board members to understand. So anyway, what question, does anybody have any questions about it? We just do them one at a time, really.
Okay, that being the case, do I have a motion to accept Policy 9054, changing county precinct boundaries?
I'll move to approve Policy 9054, changing county precinct boundaries. Or do I need to use the new name? Wait, was that changing county? Redistricting and filling vacancies to school board seats.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Bonner and a second by Board Member Wilson to accept and to act on Policy 9054 as is rewritten. Is there any discussion? That being the case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay, that passes. Kimberly, next.
Okay, David, you have 9056. That one's the easier one. Okay, look at 90, so we have a 54, changing county precinct boundaries, and a 56, changing county precinct boundaries. This one was one sentence long. Every member of the Board of Education shall be and remain a resident and a qualified and registered elector in the school representative district from which he or she is elected or appointed. That's straight from state statute. So I can see that a former board, maybe back in 2003, had an issue with this particular part of the state statute. And therefore, the board approved their policy committee, or whoever did it back then, to put this in place because it wasn't reflected in policy. I get why things were put, I was giggling, not to be disrespectful, but it's literally one sentence. We have applied that in the next policy. So our recommendation as a policy committee is to retire 9056. We've included the information in 56 in the rewrite of the next one.
Okay, do I hear a motion to retire Policy 9056?
I move that we retire Policy 9056, changing county precinct boundaries.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Beeson and a second by Board Member Clement to retire Policy 9056. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay, that passes. Let's go to 9058.
Okay, on this particular policy, it was formally elections and term of office. And as we have four board seats that will currently be up for election, we thought this would be a good time to get this one up to date as well. So our committee wanted to add a word to the title so that the public is very clear that these are board elections and term of office. We've written a statement of policy. But the things that we thought were outdated in the writing, if you look down below, it didn't have a statement, but it just started out with elections and term of office. And all of that was very factual, right from state code. But it's just, it's included in a way that you'd have to read everything to understand maybe something that you really wanted to get an answer for. I don't know that that makes that much sense, but let's look at the rewrite. So if you keep scrolling, you can see that we have now broken it down under board member qualifications. And by the way, typically, you don't see highlights from our committee. But on Monday, after our committee had met, the governor signed in a bill that was proposed, Senate Bill 18? Wait. Oh, excuse me, Senate Bill 170. And it now, it's moved up what state statute currently said on or after the second Friday in March and before 5:00 p.m. on the third Thursday in March.
Yeah, I wanted to, I don't even know, I wanted to make a substitute motion on that one just because we don't want to revisit this every single year and have to change the date. And so I was thinking when we found 1.1.1, instead of using the specific date, that we instead say, Utah Clerk is required by Utah Code on the dates established by the state legislature. That way, we won't have to continue to visit this and change the dates yearly. That would be my substitute motion.
So you have, just so, I haven't written, I know I'm not part of your motion, but you just said, "on the dates established by the state legislature"?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
But before we finish motions, I would, as we just be housekeeping for the committee, but I would love for it to say Board of Education instead of just Board.
On the...
Right, uh-huh.
Oh, Board of Education, right there.
On which, Stacy?
Right there.
On the title?
Yes.
So I don't think we have a motion yet, so you're not amending your motion, but if you'd like to make one, you could.
So let's call for a motion, a motion now on Policy 9058.
I move that we approve Policy 9058, board elections and term of office. Do I hear a second?
But I want to add.
Somebody else has.
Let's have a second, and then we'll have an amended, amended.
Forget about the amendment.
Okay. Now you can amend it. Now, is there any discussion? Board Member Beeson.
I would just like to amend it as we discussed before. And Stacy's, and Board Member Beeson's.
So two amendments are to include Board of Education elections and term of office in the title. And then, under Procedures in Section 1, we would omit the part in yellow, and we would add "on the dates established by the state legislature." And our committee would review that annually to make sure that we have whatever dates are established by the state legislature.
Well, my idea was to be able to just say the dates established and leave it so we don't have to revisit this every single year to change the date.
Okay. So I have it exactly written as you amended. Thank you.
Okay, we...
I'll second her amendment. I will second the amendment that my good colleague made.
Just a point of clarification. It may be helpful to see if there are additional changes that need to be considered. So there are multiple amendments. So maybe the amendment could be, I amend the motion to include all additional changes that we agree upon in the discussion. Unless we are through with, I think there's some other points that you wanted to clarify in this.
Yes. Is it my, do I go next? Okay. Okay, so on page, thank you, Superintendent. On the final point, we have had some questions from interested parties as candidacy application is coming up. And we've had citizens that have said, is it a conflict of interest if my spouse or if myself is a contracted servant for Alpine School District? For example, like with the nurse. WASAT mental health is another one that's come up. Substitute, we are aware of that one's come up. Can I be an employee, can I be a teacher and apply? That's come up through questions. So those questions that come to the Superintendent's office, it helped us think through, oh, in this rewrite, maybe under conflict of interest, we could include, this is new to our committee, just the statute that clarifies conflict. But then, as I reviewed it with legal counsel, he recommended that we also add 1.6.2 that said, board members should familiarize themselves with conflicts of interest that are identified, not just in 2014, but also in Utah Public Officers and Employees Ethics Act, which is 67164. So if we could add those as further clarification, just to the public, to you as board members, so that you understand what it is referring to. My understanding initially was just out of 20A in state statute. I wasn't connecting with our Ethics Act. And that's the additional line that didn't go out in board communications, but recommending that it would strengthen this particular policy with the questions we've seen.
Kimberly, can you expound a little bit on that second point? Is there anything surprising in that law that we would not know about?
Not surprising at all. I think what it does is it helps clarify those with questions. We can further review it more, but you know, for example, I have 67164, oh, you pulled it up good. So we would be specifically talking about Section 1. 2 is mainly referring to like teachers who, outside of their teaching contract, they might do tutoring or, you know, other things that are like teaching, but that's not a conflict of interest. Conflicts of interest would be identified in A through E. It's just further information and clarification, just to concern.
Okay, is that all?
Yes.
That's enough?
Oh.
Do, now, I'm not sure, should I restate this and then call for discussion?
I have one more item, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just going back to language. It says employees of the board, but I believe the only employees of the board are these two.
I asked our legal counsel, employees of the board are the district.
Oh, okay.
That's the reference that it's being referred to as. We are Alpine School District employees. Board of Ed, I think, signature on the check to board president.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to approve Policy 9058 with three changes. Change number one is the title says Board of Education elections and term of office. Change number two is under board member qualifications, where we omit the date it's given and put in language that says that dates established by the legislature each year. And change number three is to add 1.6.2 on conflict of interest. Do we have any discussion on the substitute motion? That being the case, let's vote on the substitute motion. All in favor of the substitute motion as described, please say yea. Yea? Aye? Sorry, aye? I don't know where that came from. It's been a long day. And any opposed, say no. That being the case, the motion passes. Thank you.
So now it has been amended and passed as amended, correct?
It is the past as amended, so does it mean to go back to the original?
The substitute motion passed, so.
The substitute motion passed. Thank you. At this point, are there any board member or superintendent reports and information items for the public at this time?
Well, yes, there are, Board Member Hacken. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to thank those watching for their grace. And just let you all know, we started at 8:00 with one, it was USBA Day on the Hill, which is a fabulously exciting day. And we were able to meet with almost everybody, right? All but two. Just fun fact, we have 14 that cover Alpine School District. So nine in the House of Representatives and five in the Senate. We're very appreciative of those who... Let me think for a minute. Who listen to our concerns and consider the impact on our teachers. It has been kind of a rough year to be a teacher with some of these bills. And so we just really appreciate those who listen and and take that into consideration. Anyways, it was a very exciting day.
I'd like to add that some of our legislators had really good comments about ways that we can cooperate together and that we can work together. Senator, Mike Kennedy comes to mind in particular. But the overall feeling was, one, of congeniality and a willingness to work with the schools and a desire to make things better for teachers. It was a very positive experience on the whole. Other reports?
I just want to give a shout out to my community and for Mayor Frost of American Fork and the city council. Communities that care, that work with the council, the mayor, have placed vaping sensors in bathrooms at American Fork Junior High, American Fork High School, and Polaris High School. They have been great to work with as a community. They care about the students and they care about what they can do as a city to support the schools in American Fork. I will have the opportunity with another colleague in the district to be able to participate in Citizens Academy on Thursday. And it's a six-week course that I'll be working with resource officers from the school and local police department. And I'll be excited to report what happens in that next six weeks. And so I just appreciate the support that American Fork City gives to the students of American Fork.
I also wanted to kind of put a shout out to the city council members in Orem who have reached out to me and to Sarah Hacken and to our business administrator, Rob Smith. Our city council has voted to do a feasibility study concerning a school district, an independent school district. And I'm just grateful for the past year of review that we've given this issue and for the information that we have to make available to our public. So I am appreciative of those who have reached out to us.
Any other board member reports?
So just a couple of things I wanted to make the board aware of. Something that we have been monitoring very closely is our COVID counts. And I believe they are the lowest that we've had in a long time. We're down to 121. We know the testing is a little bit different, but we're pleased to see that go down. The other thing I'd like to comment on is just the work that ESS is doing. Our substitute provider, appreciate Kami and Harper, we'll use the right name there, and her work with her team. We have hired 192 substitutes in the month of February alone. 321 substitutes have been added since January 3rd, when we went into that emergency mode. Many of them are starting the next school day. Our turnaround is just, we shortened that to where we're getting them hired and deployed into our schools. We're seeing fill rates in the 90%. We had our highest request for substitutes, I think, on Friday of last week. It was, and it's a vacation day, it was on a long weekend. And so we were not able to hit 90% fill rate on that day because of the significant request. But we have, we are trending in a very good direction there. We've concluded, I think, about six of our 10 cluster meetings and hearing very positive reports that the significant angst that our teachers were feeling several weeks ago has dissipated a little bit with the increase in fill rates. Appreciate the leading learning team and deploying many of their administrators out to support in high-needs schools as well. So appreciate the board's efforts on that. And I'm grateful that we are trending in a more positive direction. To your comments, Board Member Wilson, I just wanted to add a few comments of my own about the vote by the Orem City Council. This board is aware of, I would just remind the public, that the Board of Education asked the leadership team to do a thorough study of district reconfiguration a year ago. And that was presented over four different board meetings. We considered a reconfiguration of a two-district configuration and a three-district configuration. We did not at that time contemplate a single municipality separation. We are happy to provide that data on a single-city separation, single municipality separation upon request. I believe Rob and his team have put that together. As different cities asked for that, we could be able to provide how that would impact that city and others. So our study was not of a single municipality separation. So our study was not of a single-city separation. It contemplated reconfiguring Alpine School District into three different districts or two different districts. The recommendation of the leadership team at that time was this is not the right time to reconfigure Alpine School District. The Board of Education asked for an annual review of that information to consider what other variables have come into play and if there are things that we ought to study that perhaps we didn't study or things have changed, conditions have changed where we would recommend that Alpine School District initiate that reconfiguration of the district. We feel that we have a stewardship to all 14 of the municipalities that we serve, to all the students, all 84,600, whatever it's up to right now, all 9,000 employees and all of our patrons, that if we were to initiate a reconfiguration of Alpine School District, we would want to make sure that that was an equitable redistribution or a reconfiguration of Alpine School District. There are some things that we feel need to be accomplished as we are together, that we are stronger together, and that there will come a time when it is perhaps right to reconfigure Alpine School District. But one of the guiding principles for that reconfiguration should be to not unfairly disadvantage a particular municipality, set of employees or students in a particular area. That we have a stewardship for all municipalities, all patrons, and all students in Alpine School District. And we should continue to work and serve their needs. We will engage in and cooperate with and facilitate any municipality who seeks to spur their study and understand how separation or reconfiguration would affect them, their students, or their taxpayers in terms of resources, taxes, or other ramifications. So that's kind of our statement right now. We are open, we're transparent, we're willing to work with any individual. Our collective finding of those results from when we studied that it was not in the best interest of Alpine School District, its students, patrons, or municipalities to reconfigure into a two-district or three-district separation at this time.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any other comments?
I have one more. I feel like we have neglected teaching and learning. I want you all to know it's a fabulous committee led by Dr. Joel Perkins and Dr. John Patton. And one of the things I wanted to just call attention to right now is that they have simplified the application process for the summer collaboration grants. And I am always in favor of anything that simplifies things for our teachers. If you don't know what that is, sometimes various departments will submit an application and say, hey, we're going to work on, retool something, they can do it right after school ends later. Anyway, it's just very appreciative of them being where our teachers need. And it's a fabulous committee and we'll do better talking about.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? Okay, at this time, we have need to move into closed session to discuss matters of personnel, property litigation, and collective bargaining. To move into that, we need a voice, an individualized voice count. So starting with Board Member Wilson.
Yeah, I'll move.
What do you motion for, sorry?
I'll move that we go into closed session for matters of personnel, property, litigation, or collective bargaining.
See, okay. It has been moved by Board Member Wilson and seconded by Board Member Bateman that we move into closed session. All in favor individually?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. We will now move into closed session. And thank you for participating with us tonight.